Folks, thank you all for joining us. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We will also remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance to do a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. So we had recently Jim Fitzgerald, longtime resident of the city, passed away. Jim was a former mayor. He represented the city in Montpelier as well, and he served in a number of public capacities. So I'd like to ask you all to take a moment of silence in memory of Jim Fitzgerald. Thank you. We'll start off with item number three on the agenda, which is a general public comment on non-agenda-related matters. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to share any comments? And we'll go to online, so we do have one hand up.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the city for putting trees on our green belt. We, Rug Street is a pretty well tree-lined street, but there's a few houses mine and a couple others right next to us that don't have any trees, mature trees at all. So it was nice, we got two trees on the green belt that looks really nice, well put in, it was quick, and I'm just excited to add a little bit more greenery on the street. So thanks to the city for that.
You're welcome. You should be getting an invoice on that.
How many trees did we do? Because I've seen a lot of them.
Fifty.
Fifty?
Including the ones we did on Hard Rock.
Okay, so there's a couple streets that got a lot of trees in.
Yeah, but a big focus on Stowe Street this year.
One more furl, right? They were scattered pretty well.
Yeah.
I would just, I think we've done that how many years on the road now? Six? We continue to plant the trees, we try to replace the ones that are removed for whatever reason. I think it's even more important moving forward that we invest more in the trees because we're going to have to deal with the emerald ash more if that comes to fruition moving forward. So I think Dave said at one time before Dave Southwick left, I think we had 163 ash trees within our, within the green belts around the city, I think. So we may have a number of trees to replace moving forward. So, any other comments online on the Zoom portion? I'm not seeing any hands up, so we're going to move on to the public hearing regarding the city and our receipt of the ARPA funds, which I believe will be just under $2 million. And those need to be spent by 2024, Chip, or is it 2025?
The costs need to be obligated by 2024, so they need to be under contract. I'm just going to share a screen, do a quick presentation for some background. So the ARPA funding, the term we use, are the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The city is going to get just a smidgen over $2 million we received, we're going to receive over the course of the year in allotments. This is one-time money. There are no plans that we know of to continue this ever again, so it's a pretty unique opportunity, but also something that won't be repeated. There are some eligible spending areas that we're supposed to be focusing on according to the law. One is to support public health expenditures, mostly directly associated with response to the pandemic. I'm going to go over the bottom three next. Replacing lost public sector revenue based on the pandemic, for instance, if a municipality had fees that it wasn't able to collect on because of the pandemic. Number four is providing premium pay for essential workers, once again associated with response to the pandemic, but there's different ways to interpret that. And then investing in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Now, the first four I read were pretty focused things. Number two on the list is actually a huge one that has a lot of description in the federal rules, addressing the negative economic impacts of the pandemic. And they elaborate a lot of different ways in which the money can be used. Investing in housing in neighborhoods, including home repairs is one. Supporting small businesses. Speeding the recovery of the tourism, travel, and hospitality sectors. Delivering assistance to workers and families. Addressing health disparities and the social determinants of health. Addressing educational disparities. And promoting healthy childhood environments. Now, other than the infrastructure category, which is basically any infrastructure work on water, wastewater, and broadband is eligible in itself, any of the city's efforts in any of the other categories have to be tied to pandemic response or in supporting those affected by the pandemic and/or any work associated in the city's qualified census tract, which is half of the city west of Main Street. That's based on the median income level and poverty level in that census tract in the city. So for the non-infrastructure funding that the city does, it has to be pandemic-related or it can be in the qualified census tract. Like the mayor was alluding to when we started, the funds have to be spent or obligated by, I believe, the end of December 2024. And the city will have to report on how the funds are spent, but in this case, it's reporting after the fact more often than not. This isn't, this isn't something where we have to apply the funds to do a certain thing, make sure we follow the rules, say we're going to do that, and then get the funding. This is where we get the funding. We know the rules we have to follow, and then we have to report later on on how we spend the funds.
And this is on new projects, right? Not projects that we've had money approved, the voters have approved money for?
It's generally the answer is yes, especially since there's a real pandemic response to this funding. In terms of the infrastructure, you know, this funding could technically be used for things that have been on the city's priorit list for infrastructure and water, wastewater, and broadband.
But not previously approved? So example, we did a whole bunch of work at the sewer treatment plant a few years ago. We owe a chunk of money for that. We can't use some of this money to pay that down?
Yeah, especially since we've pretty much already used funds on that, yes. We can't offset funds previously spent, I don't believe. We can check in on that, though.
Any other questions for Chip? I would like to point out that our last meeting, we did present, the city manager presented the pilot project where we will be investing in some homes with 12,500, a grant, half grant, half loan, and this goes directly to, goes to this as well. So that's investing in housing and neighborhoods. So we've had many conversations about opening this up for public conversations, for public suggestions. We did want to make sure, I know in one of our neighboring communities, people wanted to use the money for a swimming pool, but this is why we presented this, to make sure that we do, suggestions that we do get fit into the, into the description that's intended by the federal government. So with that, I would ask if there's anyone, and if you are present and you want to speak, Chip, are we going to kick you out or we'll just go from there?
Good, yeah.
So if you people have comments, please come on up and state your name, if you would, and speak into the microphone.
I'm Mary.
How are you?
I'm good. What's my new phone?
Did you find a roof or a bed? What were you looking?
Yeah, your bed.
Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, you're on your toes. I'll sit in just a second, but I wanted to hand these out for you. I'm here to ask you to prioritize projects focused on climate adaptation and planning. And you might say, hmm, is that on the list? And thank you. I didn't make enough, I'm sorry. I thought, oh, seven state councillors, okay. Perhaps you'll share, and I'll read this to someone. I'll just read a couple of sentences from this to kind of set the stage. The Treasury is, the US Treasury is the agency that is overseeing these expenditures. And quote, "Treasury encourages recipients to consider green infrastructure investments and projects to improve resilience to the effects of climate change." And further, on the second page, there's a quote about using money for planning for that sort of thing. The Treasury, again, provided appropriate pre-project development activities, planning and assessment activities such as cost effectiveness analyses, water, energy audits, conservation plans, and capital improvement plans. So whoever didn't get one, councillors, I'm sorry, I got one more here.
What's your step?
I will. Who's missing? There we go. And this is the bullet that involved in water and sewer, which is sort of an obvious place to go, although you'll see in there that communities are using these ARPA funds for urban tree studies and climate action plans and broader projects in the context of dealing with resilience. So I wanted to encourage you to think big, think long. So for example, if we're looking at water and sewer projects in anticipation of extreme weather, like really extreme weather, and not only resilience in the context of weather, but in anticipation of climate migration over the next 15 years, we might need to triple capacity. I'm not sure we're going to do all that now, but we should be planning for it and thinking about it and researching it. I think it's also conceivable that we should anticipate two-week power outages that would take down the sewer treatment plan if we don't have enough generator capacity. So I'm not a technical person, I don't know what we got. I just want us to think beyond the, what we can see right now today in front of us. There's more coming, and if we can spend some money to do some research, to make sure that the decisions we make now will segue into the decisions we have to make in the future. There's a phrase that's associated with scenario planning called no regrets decision-making. So that whatever small steps we take today, we don't regret in 10 years or 15 years or 20 years by saying, oh, we spent all this money on this thing and we didn't think about these other things. So I want to encourage you to think about those other things before you embrace a project. And in the category of people who are disproportionately affected by COVID, kids, kids. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone? Zach, come on up.
Sorry, Shuffler from 16th Lane Street. I just want to thank you personally so much for giving up public comment.
What's your name again?
It's Zach Shuffler. Thank you so much for opening conversation about this. I think it's a big conversation. It's really important conversation to have with as many people as possible and laying out information that I saw in the presentation is super helpful. So Chip, thank you so much for putting that together. I think it really focuses this conversation in a way that's super helpful. There are like a lot of things that I felt are coming together here in the city, and this is kind of, the ARPA funding is kind of, I think, the largest piece of that. I've spent a ton of time with the city police advisory board, as well as just my experiences lived here in the city, and really getting a front row seat to some of the needs in terms of public health and mental health that we need here in the city. I know that time spent with the city police advisory board has really shown that embedding or having crisis workers on staff to meet the needs of people in the city who are going through an immense number of psychological, emotional, and physical challenges right now due to not only physical impacts of the pandemic, but the psychological and emotional after-effects that are going to be with us for a really, really long time. You know, one person I was just chatting with, Amanda, I see her a lot, we both walk outside in the city a lot on those awesome sidewalks, and she was just talking about how not only did she get COVID, but she's in a position now where she's trying to spend as little time in her home and in her apartment because of COVID exposure, but also because the relationships and the folks around her, their emotional states, their psychological states make her feel unsafe. And combining that with some of the experiences, firsthand accounts from Sam, the crisis worker in the SAPD right now, my impression and the impression that both Amanda and Sam have given me is that as far as the needs of the populace, a huge part of that is dealing with family situations, personal relationships, that have not only been strained by the pandemic, but have really shown to, or really revealed some underlying tensions and have exposed people to real danger. So as far as I'm concerned, the ARPA funds being this one-time opportunity to fund public health in terms of enhancing the public safety response of the PD to these instances that, you know, of emotional and mental crises, that demand an intentional, specialized approach to said situations. In my mind, I think the ARPA funding in particular is well suited to not only fall in line with the needs of the city, but fall in line with the needs of what I'm hearing at the city police advisory board from folks like Sam and the CSS who realize the demand out there. So as far as necessities, I just, I can only humbly ask that one considers the part of the public health needs of the community, just the psychological and emotional health of the folks who need it most. I could go on, I really want to keep it brief, but I will say that I can commit to sending you all some white papers afterwards to show you the real-world rollouts of some of these programs, the real-world effects and improvements that these folks can, or these programs can have on general population and why they're so needed. You know, if I had to think of something specifically, and kind of more generally, I should say, why I feel so many things are aligning at this moment is because, you know, I went on a ride along with SAPD and I was told that best work is done when it's specialized, and our officers don't have to do literally everything in every situation. And at the police advisory board, just hearing the amount of social service calls and crises calls that folks go on, and then hearing Sam just talk about the openness, the gratefulness that the community has to see a crisis worker, right, loose on the ground, doing this work, I just feel like it's an opportunity to really help folks in the city in a real way that, you know, I'm not sure has been done in as big a way as it should have been or could have been, but it's something that we can look forward to in improving our response. It all comes down to money and so many of these conversations, where are we going to get the money to hire these people to, you know, do this work? And I feel like this is a particularly unique, special, and one-time opportunity to invest in public health in this way. To close, I just want to say that conversations have really, there are a lot of people involved in this conversation, and they're all saying the same thing, and I see that ARPA funds as a way to not only make those conversations real, but to do something that has a potential to really, really help folks in deep way. So thank you so much for listening to me, and I'll send that email just for your own reading material, further research, along with some of those case studies are a lot of creative, but more importantly, very targeted and specific uses to things like childhood development and safety, learning opportunities, and just improving life and well-being in the city. So as narrow as the parameters are, and I think that within those narrow parameters, there's some really important, important things that we can do here if we so choose. So that's all I have to say for now. Thanks again.
Thanks, Zach. So you can send that to Chip, if you want us, but Zach sent you that, you'll forward it on?
Yep, I appreciate that so much, Chip.
Quick question on this. Is this a funding issue? Like, I know expanding it is different than, you know, to different, to different areas, but with Sam, is it a funding issue or is it a staffing issue? Like, NCSS doesn't have enough staff.
Why don't we save that for the budget discussion? It's, you know, it's very complex. Funding frankly is not the biggest hurdle, right? It's finding who do they work for, what do they do, is, what's their skill set, how much of it's drugs, how much of it's conflict, who works nights, who doesn't, you know? So I think the PAB is going to come forward with some ideas in the December meeting.
So. I like the idea, just was wondering what the barrier is from enact, not today?
You know, one of the, I, as we approach these, I think there's our ongoing funding through the general fund and the local option tax and other fee-for-service arrangements, which might be a better fit for something like this, right? I mean, you wouldn't want to hire a crisis worker until the ARPA funds ran out, right? But we can, you know, you could, you could use the ARPA funds potentially as a bridge, you know, phase it in, right?
The other thing just for context is that base revenues are up, and it's becoming pretty clear that statewide, the way that we fund mental health services is going to have to evolve in some ways, and so part of that conversation may lead to some new opportunities. You know, the city doesn't fund mental health services, right? That's a, the state does that through designated agencies, NCSS, et cetera. And there's a real understanding that there's, there are resources that, there are gaps that aren't being provided, especially in crisis mental health. And I think that funding isn't one-time funding. That's to Dom's point, it's, that's ongoing based funding, and I don't think that's going to come from the city, but it might be the way that we, you know, use a state grant that becomes available to fund a position like that. I could see that being very likely in the next fiscal year. So we should keep talking about that.
Okay. Just on side note, I just want to thank Zach for his, all his work in helping get rid of the white supremacist stickers that have been in the city. Also, Zach, thank you, I saw you out the other day picking up trash, so much appreciated.
Thank you, Zach. So we'll go to those online. Does anyone have any comments to share regarding the ARPA funds? Raise your hand and feel free to share your comments. Ryder, raise your hand. Ryder, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't have anything quite as serious as the other things brought up, but I would love to see potentially arts, funding of arts. St. Albans city is a town or city big enough to have like some sort of theater company. It was something that a group of us were exploring for this past summer, doing something in the park, like a Shakespeare in the Park type thing, and just because of the Delta variant, it got kind of stuck in the weeds and we were unsure how to proceed with it. But it's something we'll do in the future, hopefully next year, but it would be great to see the city do a little bit of work with the auditorium there at City Hall. While there's been some investment in it, it's definitely bare bones at the moment, and it could be improved to a point where you could have, you know, like a big show there. That sort of thing drives in revenue, it brings people into the city. Those people come, they see a show, they have dinner before, they have drinks afterwards, they, you know, they spend money there. It also uplifts the city as a place where people can come and partake in arts. So I would love to see that put as some sort of a potentially useful use of these funds. I think it, I think it would be beneficial. It's definitely something I'm like interested in as a theater arts major myself, and it's something that I will, I'll work on next year to do a Shakespeare in the Park thing with the group of people we're working with, but it would be great to see a space where it could be done all year round, you know, the right way. Because right now, the auditorium at City Hall, it's good, it could be used for something like that, but it doesn't have enough put into it to really use it in that way. So just something to think about in terms of how to uplift the community a little bit more and increase arts in the city itself. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just about to say, I did not have any conversation with Ryder about my comments at our planning session, because Ryder, you just said almost verbatim what I said when we were brainstorming about things, dreaming and scheming things we might want to see from the city. Thanks, man.
I was big on the arts and some sort of theater production as well, so right up to Ryder, appreciate it.
If I just might say, we're currently work, I mean, I have the framework for a nonprofit rail city theater company, I think is what we're calling it, but it's in the works now, so hopefully by next spring or summer, it'll be a 401(c)(3) and we'll be able to be used in that manner. But I'm just, I think it's something that would be useful for the city in general. It's something that also connects to your parks and rec department. I mean, there's all sorts of uses for a space like that, so.
Anyone else?
Chris.
Marissa.
Marissa, my eyesight is not very good, so I have to.
That's okay. Don't worry. So it's Marissa. I live on Lake Street. So I've recently been working, I started working on Spectrum, and I've noticed, you know, there's, like, I've just been thinking a lot about the youth in St. Albans and what they have for opportunities and things they can do after school and in the evenings and on the weekends. And so I don't have any like thought-out ideas, but I just wanted to advocate for city councillors to really think about what we can do for the youth in St. Albans, whether it's helping, like creating some kind of theater thing, getting them involved in the arts, or other ways that we can get them engaged. I just think like, and also with education stuff, you know, thinking today about students who are still missing tons of school because they have to get tested and like they have to go through all of that, and they're. to go through all of that and they're, you know, there's still a lot of stuff that's being impacted that way. And then so I think if we can sort of, or if you could all lean into that and thinking about that and thinking about the youth, I just wanted to advocate for that.
Do you have any particular age group you're thinking about or are we talking all Spectrum?
Yeah, um, it's hard. Like I think we, the, the new drop-in center, the Spectrum drop-in center is engaging sort of older youth and is creating a space. But youth, like pre-12-year-olds, like I'm seeing a lot of like nine, 10, 11-year-olds who are out just like running around and could use some kind of way to like engage them. And there may be things happening, but it does seem like there's a lot of them without sort of a place that they're finding themselves.
Why we have you, could you share maybe your top three needs at the Spectrum Center?
Oh, I am not, I've only been there a month. I mean, I, I would say send if you know that there are like homeless youth out there who need a place to go, like walk them down, bring them over, we would love that. Our meal train, we have a meal train, so if people want to donate meals, it's really helpful. Yeah, I, I mean, I, yeah, I think we really, yeah, we want to just like be there. And so right now, we're finding that we're still early enough that we just want to encourage people to come and, and use the space and know that it really is a safe place for them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've heard some great stories already from Spectrum, so they're going to.
Anyone else remaining on the call? Alan, Laura, Jamie?
Natalie.
Natalie, take it. If anyone has any other comments regarding ARPA funds, please join us.
Or they can email us at any time or see any calls.
Any of us? Okay, hearing nothing else? Anyone else in the audience?
I just have a quick thing to add. I think the State's Climate Committee or Council or Climate Council, I guess, I think their draft report is due in December.
It is.
And there may be an opportunity to sort of dovetail something at the city level with some of the state recommendations and anticipate state funding that would be part of the, part of the mix. I'm sorry, I was going to mention that. We have a calendar on that.
Mike, are you doing the exact date on that?
Yeah, so there's, basically what's going to come out in early December, I think the statutory language says by December 1st, but it's going to be later is what I'm hearing through the grapevine. But what's going to come out before the start of legislative session is essentially a preliminary plan that hopefully will include a lot of the really specific recommendations of the subcommittees. And they've been doing, you know, public outreach all year throughout the summer and fall. And the subcommittees have, I think all now, so they have a committee on cross-sector mitigation that's talking about the energy profile of the state. There's a resiliency committee, there's a committee that's focused on ecology and agricultural resources. And so all these subcommittees have experts on them that have delved into really specific recommendations. And they've been really trying to do the recommendations by consensus, which is tough because they have people with really diametrically opposed, you know, policy and political views. And so what's going to come out is a, a big, but what might be somewhat vague set of recommendations. And so there's going to be work in the legislature next year to figure out how we take money like this that we're talking about here down at the local level, efforts that have been underway on climate that we can put more federal money into and figure out what things are based and what are one-time spending and what are things that are going to need ongoing revenue in order to support the adaptation. The resiliency pieces, I think, have actually the broadest support to Mary's point for state funding. I think what gets harder is when we start to think about like, what are the things that we're doing to actually move everybody off of fossil fuels and onto, you know, driving electric vehicles and using electric and clean heat sources and like biomass and other things that are alternatives to fossil fuels. So all that's to say, there's going to be this like big dump of all those information recommendations in December, and then there's going to be a bunch of legislating, and then there's going to be a lot of federal and state programming and funding that will be rolling out. And I think down here at the city council level, you know, we've done a good job when there are state programs, like I think about all the work that Chip's done with Stormwater, like being on top of it, being forward-thinking, thinking about how we're going to fund it. And I wonder if there are opportunities for us to make sure that for some of those adaptation and resiliency things that we might be required to do, if there are one-time expenses that we might, that we might prioritize some of the ARPA money so that we can get a jump on some of that stuff that we know we're going to have to do. But we also, I mean, we, we've got plans in place to do a lot of that work already and, you know, I, we might be able to take some pressure off of our ongoing Stormwater money with getting ahead of it. That's one of the things I think of that will come out of some of that resiliency recommendations. It's like, how do we, how do we keep the, how do we adapt to having storms that used to be at 100 years being every five or 10 years?
So Mike, is any of the 2.2 billion that's coming for the infrastructure bills, any of that like directed right at climate?
Yeah, but again, it's like, when you think about legislation versus what are the rules going to be? So who's going to manage it at the state and local level? And what eligibility and criteria will there be for those programs? None of that's been written, like none of the details have been written. So we know all this money's coming, especially since the first infrastructure bill just passed. And, you know, that's going to help us, I think, do a lot of infrastructure improvement in Vermont. I mean, we're, we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars just here in Vermont over the next five years. But keeping a climate lens on how we spend all that money, this little $2 million ARPA bucket that we have here in the city, I mean, it's going to be eclipsed. I think there's like $225 million coming just for like bridge improvements over five years. So it's a, it's going to be big and we've, you know, to Mary's point, like we're going to have to be really thoughtful about not regretting the way that we invest this historic money.
You know, we talked about too many, too many dollars doesn't go very far anymore. Especially when you spread it out over five years or four years, $500,000 a year and you struggle to, what was the Kingman Street project? What was the total on that?
It started out by 1.6.
Well played, Chip. Just to put in perspective, it does, uh, too many, and the point being too many doesn't go real far anymore. But we'll, we will continue to talk about it and see reporting out as soon as we can. We'll move on to item number five, which is back to you, Chip, which is the adopt number resolution for the VCDP grant.
Thank you very much. Remember, we received a grant, speaking of Spectrum, we received a grant through us from VCDP to assist Spectrum with their first one or first two years of operation at the Lake Street location. The grant is for $300,000. And we finally are at the point where we have a grant agreement to sign and a resolution of the city council is required before we can sign that grant.
So when you're back, everyone had a grant agreement or resolution? Did anyone have any questions for Chip on that?
Chip, this is the $300,000 grant and we're, it just passes through us directly to Spectrum.
Motion to adopt the resolution for VCDP, VCDP grant.
Second by Tim, second by Jim. Any other questions for Chip? Comments, anyone in the audience, anyone? Hearing gone, although in favor of approving a resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing gone, the resolution passes. Thank you, Chip. Do you need signatures?
Yes. Print on the left side of the page.
Well, that's going out for signature. We'll move on to the next item, which is item number six. It's also brought forward by Chip regarding the grant list value for one property.
Yes, every year, there might be a couple of things missed that we, where after we've launched our grant list, we are able to do errors and omissions with city council approval. We need to do them by December 31st and typically they come before the council in November or December. This one, we wanted to make sure we got out the door because it could affect the current property owner. Basically what happened is, you may remember, there was a fire at 17 Lower Gilman Street in March. And as the grant list was put together in April, it just sort of fell through the cracks that that property should have been updated in the grant list in April to, to reflect the fact that functionality of the building was severely reduced by the fire, until such time they could be renovated or replaced. But in the meantime, the effect of the fire does need to be reflected in the grant list because it did happen before. So this is a classic case for an error in admission to the grant list. We're basically saying the, when we reduce the functionality of the structure in our grant list software, we came up with a new value that reflects the effects of the fire and we're asking the city council to approve that change.
I move to just the grant, April 1, 2020, our grant list for 17 Lower Gilman Street to reflect the reduction in value because of the fire took place.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve. Do we need to recite the change?
That the change would be from 143,200 to 61,400.
Yes, I would admit my motion did say that.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jim, seconded by Marie. Any other questions on this? Hearing gone, although in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Opposition, motion passes. Thank you, Chip. Move on to the mayor's report. Quickly, I want to thank all the volunteers who participated in spooky, spooky Saturday or Halloween events. The first one was out of town, but I was thrilled by many people that, the number of people that were in the downtown area for a variety of events and activities was very good, despite the overcast and a little rain. So thank you to all those volunteers who included a number from the high school as well and Rotary and other organizations. So once again, another successful downtown event. I popped in here on Saturday for the craft show, which was very well-received benefiting the Josh Prada Fund. The hall was full and attendance was very good, so we're very pleased about that. And I think, I speak for the majority of people in St. Albans when I say that Kingman Street's almost done and it looks excellent. I think all I have to do is lay brick, right, Chip?
That's right. Street lights are turned on tonight.
Oh, they are?
Yeah. We're going to do some temporary line stretching for the winter. Once the brick is laid and closes up that gap along the sidewalk, we will open it back up for parking.
It looks wonderful. A great addition, so make sure you work on that. And I think that's all I have, so we'll move to item number eight, which is council reports. We'll start with Mr. Hawkins. Off the grid. Bob?
I don't have anything.
Four o'clock's pretty quiet.
October's been quiet. I'm going to come back.
I'll require fresh too.
Just our Halloween block party. We ran ahead and had it despite the rain. We had a canopy to stand under, so that was helpful. We gave out about 50 hot dogs, which was about 100 less than we had planned on, but it depended on the weather and the location, I think that had some bearing on it. But the people that, that did come were very appreciative of our efforts and so it was a good feeling. And we'll try it again next year and hope for better weather.
The nature doesn't look happy.
Yeah.
Marie, thank you for taking that on. Tammy moving away and keeping that going, so thank you. Mr. Spooner?
I'm going to know there's.
Should be hot dogs too. Especially laid off.
The only thing I have is just wondering when we're going to get our objectives from our meeting that we had. That was it, that's my only thing.
Probably December.
That's it.
Nothing else? Okay, let's move on to approving amendments from 9:13 and 11.
Motion to approve minutes, 9:13, 21. Second.
I am saying.
10 something.
Yeah, well, correction, we have 11 eight on that now.
9:13, 21 is right.
Let's go down first. There's a motion to approve minutes on 9:13, 21, is your second? Was it, Mike seconded it? Although, any corrections of changes, amendments? Hearing gone, although in favor of approving the minutes on 9:13.
Aye.
Three, four, six. Slacker is there. Okay, let's, motion passes?
Motion to approve minutes, 10, 11, 21.
Your second? Second. Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad. Although in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing gone, motion passes.
Motion to approve warrants, 10:31, 21.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad, for motion to approve the warrant of 10:31, 21. Any questions, comments? Hearing gone, although in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Hearing gone, motion passes. We will now move back into executive session to discuss additional.
I'd suggest you consider a motion to find that premature disclosure matters related to the appointment or evaluation of a public officer would compromise the city or person involved.
Second.
Except to adjourn. Nope, so we'll do that upstairs. And then DB as well.
Thank you, Fred, for joining us.